Welcome to Velocity, the Vista Chamber Podcast. I'm your host, Chamber CEO Rachel Beld, and it's my privilege to interview the movers, shakers, and changemakers impacting our amazing Vista community and beyond. Today, I'm joined by Vista's newest City Council member, Jeff Fox. Jeff is a lifelong resident of Vista, local business owner and community leader. He's the owner of Starfox Media, a digital marketing agency based in downtown Vista's Film Hub, right here. His company helps local small businesses thrive through inbound marketing and content creation. In addition to serving on the Vista City Council, Jeff's also a board member of the Vista Education Foundation, an ambassador for the Vista Chamber, and is active in his local church. His council platform includes priorities such as public safety, housing and infrastructure, and economic development. Jeff and his wife Mina are proud homeowners in Vista and look forward to starting a family in the community they cherish and serve. I can't wait to learn more. Welcome, Councilmember Fox.
Thank you so much for having me.
You're welcome, Jeff. Can I call you Jeff?
Absolutely.
Okay, I know, we work here in the Film Hub together. You're Jeff to me all day.
We've been Jeff for how long now?
Okay, excellent. So, thank you for that. So, before we talk about council business, I want to know, so you grew up here in Vista?
Yep, I wasn't born, but I was raised. So, I was born in Long Beach, moved down here when I was 10 months old. So, I still live across the street from my preschool.
Oh, okay, okay. So, what was it like growing up here in Vista?
So, I kind of grew up on the south end of the town, and so it was very much different then than it was now, for sure. But when I lived down there, it was it was kind of like its own little planned community kind of thing. I went to Rancho window Vista, Lake Elementary. I probably would have been at Madison, but I went to Tri-City Christian. So, I kind of stayed south of the freeway for the most part, except for Tri-City. And I didn't really feel like there was any real like need to kind of go north of the freeway. You know, there wasn't as much fun stuff to do up here as there is now.
Well, now there is.
Now there is. But back then, it was so different. And so, you know, we kind of had our little area. We kind of just stuck to it. And now I live pretty much almost as north as you can get in the city. And now I have seen no reason to go south of the freeway.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, you know, you can just hang in District 2, right? Because you represent District 2, which is kind of the downtown civic center, Bringle Terrace, expanded from their area.
Yeah, I kind of think of it as like that northeastern quadrant. So, kind of like everything east of Vista Way, everything north of Santa Fe. There's some little parts that jet out in other directions. That's kind of like the
General vicinity.
Yeah, easiest way to describe it.
Great. And so, you mentioned that you went to Lake, Tri-City, Rancho window Vista, and then where'd you go to college?
I went to the University of San Diego.
Okay, so local boy there too?
Definitely went far away for college.
Okay, okay, awesome. And then, how did you get started in your career in digital marketing and content?
Right. So, at University of San Diego, I ended up as a business administration major, but I was one class away from being a marketing major. I just took a couple too many finance classes. So, they gave me kind of the general one. But right out of school, I ended up interning with, well, actually, during school, I interned with a marketing agency out of Carlsbad. And so, they were working with a lot of really large clients back then, Gem Logical Institute, TaylorMade, like a lot of the bigger companies. And there was one marketing person in the company, and then me as their intern, and then the rest of the company is more graphic and web. So, I got to be really hands-on as a team of two on all their marketing and like all the writing, all the social media, all that kind of stuff. And so, I kind of fell in love with it. Right out of school, I ended up interning with a film production company. And so, they brought me in as a, I actually had an internship with one of the founders before that. And he was an author, and he told me, oh, we're starting this film production company, and, you know, we're looking for some help, but I know, are you looking for a job still? Like, as I was graduating, I was like, yeah, I'm still in the job market, still on the hunt. And he's like, well, come work for us. You can probably just be there for, you know, a couple weeks, doing 10 hours a week for four weeks while you look for something else. And week one, I was there for 40-plus hours. They're like, oh, you know how to do social media? Oh, you know how to do this? Oh, you know how to do this? So, I ended up kind of working there full-time from that, worked my way up, all the way to actually now I'm co-owner and president of the film production company.
Give it a shout out.
Yeah, I know, right? Princeberry Productions and Media. Yeah, so we focus mostly on the business side. So, we're doing like financing and distribution, marketing, things that aren't as glamorous, I would say. Like, as soon as it starts, they start holding cameras and filming stuff, we're kind of done. So, it's not the glamorous part of the film industry, but, you know, we get
But it's important because you can't get to the cameras without the other pieces.
Right. And I think a lot of people don't know how long it takes to get to camera part. Like, sometimes those films are in, yeah, sometimes almost a decade is pretty common on film. So, wow, yeah, it takes a long time for them to come up with a concept to raise the millions of dollars it takes to make a theatrical film, for at least on the independent side. Obviously, you know, Hollywood's a little different. But during that, you know, the film industry is so cyclical that, you know, in the little troughs in between feature films, that I would take some marketing clients on. So, I'd build a website, I'd do some videos for people, you know, just something low-key and to fill in the time. But I really loved it, you know, obviously. And so, basically, at the end of 2019, my business partner at that company actually ended up moving out to Las Vegas. And so, I was sitting there thinking like, okay, well, he is he is an old retired corporate finance attorney, so he was a big part of that financing side of the organization. And so, with him moving out of out of state, I wasn't 100% sure like the future of the company. I wasn't sure like where it was going to go. So, I was like, let's, I'll spin off a marketing and video production company. It'll have a not very much overlap with what we're doing, but it'll really augment it. So, if we do keep the film company going, I'll be able to make pitch decks, I'll be able to make websites, like little posters, like shoot some pickup shots for the films, you know, B-roll, behind the scenes, we'll be able to kind of just augment what we're doing on the film production company. And worst case scenario, if like the film company doesn't work out, I'll just keep taking small business, local small businesses. And one thing I really loved about the film industry in particular was me as a businessperson getting to work with a lot of creatives. And like, that was such a fun work environment with so much excitement and so much fun, that it was really cool then going into, you know, marketing, getting to like kind of be on that kind of creative team and work with a lot of creative people that are way more talented than me and everything else, you know?
Well, it sounds like you're a really good blend of kind of the numbers, accounting, like the left brain side, and then also the creative storytelling side, the right brain side. So, which do you think you're more of one or the other, or a good blend?
I would say I'm probably more of the the business left, it's left brain, right?
I think so.
Is the analytical one?
I think so.
I think I'm a little bit more of that. I think I've had to learn the other side. So, that the other side doesn't come as naturally to me as the more analytical. Like, I was very good at math and, you know, and very mediocre at creative writing.
Got it. Can I call you to help with my daughter's math homework? Because I'm in over my head.
It's been a little while since I've taken math classes. I was really good. I could do like, I could do like, you know, long-form addition, subtraction, multiplication with like, you know, six-digit numbers and stuff in my head. And now I feel like I have to like bring out a calculator to do two days.
Of course. Well, if you don't lose, if you don't use it, you lose it, right? And our brains just get filled up with lots of other things. And it's like, if we have the tool, use it, right?
Absolutely.
So, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so that that happened. And so, you know, the film production company is still going on, but, you know, I still, I still have the, basically, what ended up happening was at the beginning of 2020, there was this weird thing called COVID.
What was that again?
I can't remember, but I remember it was important. And so, basically, the whole film industry shut down. And so, we basically weren't allowed to film anything for about two years. The whole industry shut down. So, luckily, I had just spun off a marketing company. So, I went full-time into that, you know, and really focused on finding, you know, helping some local small businesses, which, you know, was really cool. Me as a as a film industry person, getting to work with people that were passionate, creative people that really wanted to make some awesome projects, and me as the businessperson's like augmenting what they're doing. I got to kind of do the same thing with local small businesses, which was so fun for me.
That's awesome.
You know, makes it really fun to wake up in the morning.
Yeah, that's great. So, so you, so Joe Green was our council member for District 2 for eight years, very popular council member, very popular guy, decided he wasn't going to run again. What led you to decide to throw your hat in the ring and to run for council?
Yeah, it's a great question. You know, I kind of ask myself that sometimes. No, so I was, I was, you know, with the film production company, we were building up the team on the marketing company, I mean, sorry. We were building up the team, and I found a really good, talented team of people that are better than me at everything. So, it kind of freed me up to get a little bit more involved in the community. So, that was kind of when we started, I started getting more involved with the Chamber. I started getting like involved with the Vista Education Foundation and some of those things. I was looking for opportunities to kind of just get involved and give back. And it just happened to be that I was meeting with Councilmember Green on a video project we had done a year prior, dropping off some hard drives with his footage. Just, you know, we were just chatting, and I was asking him how his campaign was going. And he's like, oh, I'm not running again. We're like, I'm just gonna, like, I was like, I did my terms. I got, I accomplished what I was here to do. And so, I'm gonna take a break. But we're actually looking for a candidate. And, you know, just right at that time, it was right as I was trying to find ways to get more involved, definitely a little bit big, like more than I was planning on doing when I was thinking about that. But, you know, I had spoken with Joe Green a bunch of times before that. And so, like, you know, I've been going to ribbon cuttings, and he's there. I've been involved, and I see him at a lot of things. So, I kind of knew a little bit about what the job was about. And, you know, I've seen city council meetings and stuff.
Yeah.
Not something I was planning on doing. That wasn't like, I want to get into politics, you know? It was just like, I want to give back to my community, and here's an opportunity.
Sure. And you know, it's interesting, you mentioned the the politics piece, because I think maybe when I first moved here 22 years ago, I feel like being on the city council, definitely there was some political part of it, but it was more about the giving back piece. And not that it's not now, but there's definitely, as a nation, there's more politics involved in everything. And we've seen that at the local level, too. So, is that difficult to navigate as someone who wants to give back and just be part of the community, as I think most of our local council members do? Is it difficult to navigate some of the political pull and push that happens naturally?
Definitely. I mean, you, it's a nonpartisan position, but it's hard to say that partisan politics doesn't start working its way in, right? Which isn't fun. Like, obviously, like, you're here for the community. You know, you have your own political ideas on like a national level, but the more local, close to home it gets. And I know, it's not, there's not such thing as a Republican or a Democrat speed bump, you know, or a pothole. You know what I mean? Like, it's literally, you're getting down to like very actionable, local things that directly impact your community. So, you know, I, I want to come at it from the perspective of, you know, what's going to be the best for the community. And so, you get pulled in directions, obviously, and, you know, you have to campaign with and for and against people that, you know, you're going to serve with and, you know?
Or people you even like, and maybe agree with a lot of things with them. Yeah.
Absolutely true. And so, that kind of brings that weird kind of thing into it. But I think most people up there are used to that and know what they're, and they don't have hard feelings. They know that, you know, and I think everyone up there does have this as best interest at heart.
Absolutely.
I think they're there for the right reasons. I don't think we have anyone up there that's, they know, that's up there for the probably $18 an hour, whatever we make.
Sure. Of course, of course. It's not, definitely, you don't, it's not, you're not doing it for the salary. But it is, it is a little bit interesting dynamic, especially at the national level when things are so divided to and to see, you know, to know that it can pull you. But it's great that we do have all of our council and mayor recognizing and focusing on what's important for Vista residents. I mean, if our toilet, if you flush your toilet and it doesn't, if the water doesn't go somewhere, if you drive in, there's potholes, if you don't have safety, if you don't have economic development, like those are things that are happening right in our backyard. Doesn't, like you said, there's no Republican or Democratic speed bump. So, yeah.
It's if the community needs it, they need it. And, you know, I, and I hope that they are not gonna feel like they can or can't ask me based off of weird political party stuff.
Part of political parties. Okay, I like that. Okay. So, I'm curious how, if your experience as a businessperson, now, you've only been on the council a few months, so you're still new, you know, still getting, getting going. But I'm wondering if there's any skills that you've learned as a businessperson that you are applying as a council member?
Absolutely. I mean, I think that one thing right off the bat is some of the more strategic level thinking of, you know, obviously, we have a budget, right, as a city. And if we do one thing, we can't do another. And so, trying to be a little bit more, you know, fiscally responsible with our, with taxpayer dollars, we have to realize that it's not like, as a council member, it's not my money, you know? And it's not the city's money, it's the people's money. And so, we just have to do the best we can with it and making sure they're getting the best value they can out of every dollar that, you know, that they give to the city. So, there's a little bit of that, a lot of strategic where it's like, on the economic development side, obviously, there's huge, I literally for a, for a living, go and I try to work with local small businesses and try to help them make more money. So, so kind of looking at, you know, how do we, as a city, bring in more businesses? How can we be more business-friendly? And so, that's going to be something that I really want to focus on, just because it's something that I have personal experience with. And so, that's something that I'd like to bring to the table as a skill set and, you know, kind of focus on as a council member. But yeah, there's across the board when it comes to branding the city, marketing the city, you know, that it's, it's kind of weird to think of the city as a like a product, you know what I mean?
But it is.
But at the same time, you have to, like, if you want people to come here for tourism, like, what is our, what is our brand? What is it that we offer that's different than our, than our neighborhoods? What's our competitive advantage? There's so many weird little things that you can kind of apply to it that I think I do naturally, that maybe someone who doesn't come from the business world, you know, wouldn't necessarily do. So, I think that there's a lot of that, that I'm, you know, that I try to bring that perspective, and hopefully, it at least helps with some of the other council members when they're like, oh, that's an interesting way to look at it. And I can add to the conversation.
That's great. That's great. So, you mentioned economic development, which was one of the priorities that we mentioned in your bio. But also, public safety is something that's important to you. Tell me a little bit about your perspective about public safety and maybe where some of your priorities may come into play there.
Absolutely. I mean, and I think a lot of stuff is kind of tied hand in hand, right? If you're trying to, you know, speak to a business about opening here in Vista, you want to make sure that they're going to come, they're not going to want to come to a place where they don't feel safe, where their stores are going to get vandalized, where, you know, there might be people, you know, that are blocking driveways and doorways and stuff like that.
There's fire risk, even that's a piece of it.
That's, that's definitely a thing. And so, you know, even just when it comes to economic development, public safety plays a key role. And I think one thing is that, you know, we're a contract city with the San Diego Sheriff's Department, and, you know, they do such a great job. And I have definitely seen a difference between now and 10 years ago. But that doesn't mean there's not always work to be done. And I know that we have, I think, one of the lowest deputies per capita out of any of the, any of the North County cities.
All the contract cities?
And yeah, and so, when it comes to contract cities and just North County cities, even if they have their own police department. So, we're a little bit on the, I think we're the only one under like one per thousand, you know? And so, I think they've been doing such a good job with what they have. And so, you know, I just want to make sure that I'm giving them all the resources they need to do the best that they can do. And, you know, we're talking about different kinds of technologies and different things right now in council, things that can, tools that they can use to augment what they're already doing. And so, you know, if we can create a more efficient, you know, an efficient, more efficient sheriff's department, that means that we can get more service without spending more of the taxpayer dollars. Because it's really important that we keep the budget in mind, because, you know, I think about, it was almost two-thirds of our budget goes to public safety. And I think a lot of people don't know that. It's that it's between the sheriffs and the fire department. It's almost two-thirds of our budget.
That's a lot.
I know. And so, you know, if every time you can make a little, some efficiencies there, you know, it can have a huge impact on the end of the year budget and bottom line. So, trying to do the best, the most we can with what we have.
Yeah, that's great. And so, then the other piece I noticed are on your bio was the piece about housing and infrastructure. So, any thoughts that you want to share about those priorities?
Sure, yeah. So, I was watching some of the city council meetings last year when it was, they were talking about the general plan for 2050. And so, that kind of became a big driving force for me was, you know, there's the plans that they kind of presented, basically, over the next 25 years, increase, you know, allow the population to be increased from about 100,000 to about 150,000. So,
That's significant.
It's a 50% increase in 25 years. That's a 2% per year growth rate, which is about double what we've been experiencing over the last 10 years. And so, a lot of people feel like we've been growing pretty quick, you know, over the last 10 years. Like, it's been, we've been expanding.
But it's on accelerate now.
And so, it's, yeah, so if, now, not everyone will, like, we won't fill the max, you know, it's not like, just because we allow for 150 doesn't mean we'll always hit 150. But, you know, a lot of the areas that they were planning on developing and creating some of that density were along the Vista Way corridor, as well as the Santa Fe corridor.
Those commercial corridors, yeah.
Right. And so, you know, that there's a lot of opportunity there with now using that to kind of, you know, go out to businesses and try to create some excitement and be able to, you know, create some economic development because of it. But there's also a lot of issues that could happen if you all of a sudden highly densify an area without taking that infrastructure into account. And so, that's something that I want to be up there advocating for is like, hey, if we're gonna quadruple the population on this street, we need to make sure that the roads can handle it, that the lights can handle it, that we have some way to get people in and out of this area without creating horrible traffic incidents. And, and that we get ahead of it, you know, that we're not waiting for it to be horrible before we decide to then shut down streets for construction to make it better. You know, it's like, you want to kind of get ahead of some of that.
Sure, sure. That's why it's called smart planning.
Yeah, it's smart planning, yes.
Well, okay, so since I have you here and we're talking about the general plan, I have to just share my thought for one second. So, I think it's important that we have the additional density along those large commercial corridors. But I wanted to say, and I've said this to our community development director, that it's really important for the city to think about when the zoning is mixed use, that the majority of zoned properties that are mixed use end up becoming mostly residential. And there's some risk there. We are at a critical need for housing. We've talked about that on the show a bunch of times with different guests about the need for housing. However, if the city doesn't find a way to encourage and incentivize there to also be commercial activity, we're going to lose all of our amenities, coffee shops, dry cleaners, grocery stores, because developers are incentivized to do the highest yield product, which is multifamily housing. And we, we will lose our those commercial amenities and have an example. So, recently, and I'm going to be vague, because I don't want to call anyone out, but there was a large vacant property that the Chamber, we were able to connect with someone to bring in a commercial use for a vacant property. The landlord was only willing to sign a short-term lease with this tenant, because they know that soon they'll be able to turn that property over into mixed use. They were only willing to sign a short-term lease. And the commercial property, the business was unwilling to do a short-term lease, because the cost of the improvements to the site would be so large that they would not recoup their costs and be able to make a profit in that short period of time. So, already, just with the concern of this general plan, there's already been a situation where we're going to lose a commercial amenity. We've already lost the commercial amenity. We can't fill the commercial amenity, and there's going to be more housing. So, I think it's important. And I don't know if there's even a legal way for mixed use to be, it has to be a certain percentage of commercial in order to maintain. We all, we all, part of the reason we love the downtown, I live near downtown, I love the downtown, because I can walk, I can get a cup of coffee, I can eat breakfast, I can have entertainment, I can hear a band, I can do all those things. If we have only housing, we don't have those, then we lose those amenities, and we lose part of the culture of our community. And we're also at risk, if there's a housing bubble bursting situation, then it's a situation like 2007 for residential communities. So, I've talked long enough. That's my thoughts. We may, we'll probably cut this all out, but I have to say it.
No, I love it. Honestly, I think that's actually really, a really important thing to think about, because, you know, our small businesses that were, that, you know, go into those units and are, they provide the entertainment, the services for the rest of the city, and the jobs.
And economic diversity.
Absolutely. And so, you absolutely want those places to be, you know, interspersed with our community. You don't want there to be any lack of something, so someone's taking their dollar and spending it in another town. You know, you definitely want people to be able to live here and shop here and do all their services here. And, you know, again, that creates local jobs, that creates more opportunity, that creates more income, you know? And so, when it comes to economic development, there's, there's two sides to, you know, like, on the personal level of making it easier for people to live, which is, you know, increasing their, their salaries, their, what they make by, you know, increasing the level, the number of jobs, so there's more competition and there's more opportunities. And then there's also the side of decreasing the cost. And some of that could be, instead of having to drive to the other side of town, they can just get it right next door. And so, like, there's, if we can do both of that, that does both of those, you know? So, it's really important for making sure that people are able to afford things, is that, you know, we have jobs here so that they can make more money, and that the services are local so that they don't have to spend as much on them. So,
And it doesn't tax our infrastructure as much. If people have the ability to get what they need nearby, whether they have to drive, walk, ride a bike, whatever, there's also less, less strain on our infrastructure, like you said, those roads and things like that.
Absolutely. Yeah. And like you said, if it's right next door, you don't have to be driving across town and be creating these like large backup traffic grid kind of thing. So,
Awesome. Thank you. Thanks for indulging me on that. I had to get on my soapbox.
Great point.
Get on my soapbox for a second.
It's something I'll definitely talk to in our economic development department and everything. And, you know, planning to make sure that there's, that some of that's talked about in this plan. And if it's not in the general plan, that in the more specific kind of, you know, and or like the, how we do it, how we implement it, that we make sure some of that's in there. Because,
Thumbs up.
Like you said, we don't want to get rid of all of our businesses, chase them out of town. That doesn't, that doesn't check out.
Because, I mean, honestly, people who own these large properties are these, they're incentivized to maximize what they can, and who wouldn't? Who wouldn't want to maximize what they can do on their property? So, thank you for that. Okay, so, now that you've been in this role a few months, what do you think has been the most surprising part about being on the council? Has anything surprised you?
Ooh, I think the excitement that our community has about some of their more sports or athletic type facilities. So, I mean, like, before I came in, it was pickleball. And right after I came in, we had the discussion on the wave. And so, I've never seen so many people come to a council meeting as when we're talking about like some of those fun, like, you know, physical activity amenities.
Yeah, quality of life matters.
It really does. And so, that was one of those things where, you know, I was a little shocked at how, you know, most meetings will get 10, 20 people in the crowd, and then you talk about something like that, and all of a sudden, it's a full-packed room with people waiting outside.
Overflow room.
Overflow rooms. And so, that was, you know, that was a little bit of a shocker. But, I mean, I do understand where they're coming from. Like, there's, you know, with the wave facility, like, I did all my sports there. I was water polo and swim team in high school. And, you know, we utilized the wave heavily for that. And so, if you think, oh, my school's going to lose its sports team, like, of course, you're going to show up.
Absolutely.
I understand. But it was like, you know, just the, you know, we're talking about public safety, we're talking about like these really big subjects, and you get like 10 people, and then you get, you talk about, you know, one of those, and it just explodes. You're like, oh, okay, yeah, that's, I get it. Okay.
Well, that, and that's great that as your role as a council member is to really listen, listen to the constituents and to make decisions. And so, it's interesting, the things that people show up and want to talk about. So, yeah, I could see why that would be surprising. That would be surprising.
Yeah, because I mean, you think of, and when you think of like, politics, right? You think of those big hot-button issues, but really, people are showing up because they want, they want their parks to be fun, you know?
It's those quality of life issues, I really believe.
And it makes me, actually feels, makes me feel a little bit better, right? And that it, and those subjects are all nonpartisan, really. It's like, there's people across the board saying
Who play water polo?
Yeah, right, exactly.
Or who play pickleball.
Pickleball, yeah.
Or who want to walk their dog.
Exactly.
Right, absolutely. That's, that's fantastic. Great, great point. Okay, let's see. Okay, so, I saw recently that you have launched a District 2 newsletter. So, tell me about that.
Yeah, so, I was speaking with the city, and I want to be able to communicate directly with people on some of these, these issues as they're coming up on agenda. A lot of times, there's, you know, we only get the agenda, and it only gets published about a week out from the meeting. And so, I wanted a way that right after that, I could blast something out and get some community feedback quickly. And then I could actually like, you know, utilize that when I'm actually trying to make decisions on how to, like, what people actually care about and prioritize. So, I spoke with them, and they were able to kind of district out the newsletter a little bit, so that, you know, people, that I can hear from local people specifically. I thought that would be important, just because a lot of things are going to affect us differently than other people, and some things are in our community. And so, I wanted to get the District 2 feedback of like what's going on. So,
Sure.
I haven't sent out my first blast on it yet, but I've been trying to like, to send people to that page to start signing up, which it's just on, on the Vista City website. If you go to city council, you'll see my name. If you click it at the bottom, I believe, there's an email signup link.
I signed up.
Beautiful. Love to hear it.
Well, I live in District 2, but also, I want to know what's happening in all the districts, too.
And I'm hoping that that's, that they don't take that as that no longer needing to send the bigger newsletter and stuff like that. I think the city newsletter is actually really good. I was going through it, and it's like, oh, yeah, no, that's important, that's important.
Absolutely.
Honestly, being in communication and marketing, I know the, the issues they face, right, is having not enough information is horrible, but having too much information is also horrible.
Well, being able to segment it to folks, I think, is important, and people can choose. Do they want one or both? One or the other or both? I think that's really important. And as a city council member, even though you represent District 2, you will also, you also have to think about the city as a whole, because what happens in this one district impacts the whole community. And there's a lot of things, you know, it's not as if some, a lot of the policies, like, when you do the general plan update, it's not for just District 2, it's for the whole town. And you're familiar with the whole community, you lived in Stradegrave area and all of that. So,
Right. And I think, and I think that is, that's completely true, is like, you kind of have two different things you have to keep in mind, which is like, you're elected by your district to serve the whole city. And so, you have to kind of be able to look at both of the, through both of those lenses, which is something that, you know, I, I try to be as, as good at and to be as conscious about as possible, is looking at situations through as many lenses as possible. I think that that's super important. So, you know, getting, getting the local feedback while we're also getting the citywide feedback, you know, and hearing on both ends is really important.
Yeah, yeah. You know, Judy Ritter was our longtime mayor, and she said something years ago back during the recession, and that I will always, I always think about, and that's, you know, the citizens elected the council to make decisions. And sometimes they're easy decisions, and sometimes they're really hard decisions. And maybe they might, people might not even like them, but they have to make the decisions of what's in the best interest for the city and for what's happening in our community. And I think that's just really good advice. And I really appreciate that perspective. And I try to think about that. When I listen to a council meeting, oftentimes, it makes sense, like, okay, I like that. But sometimes, I personally might disagree with the decision that's made. And And I try to think about that when I listen to a council meeting, oftentimes it makes sense. Like, okay, I like that. And, but sometimes I, I personally might disagree with the decision that's made and I have to think, okay. You know, Judy Ritter said that the council has to make the decision based on what's best for the full community. And if all of our council members are there, thinking about what's best for our full community, approaching things with common sense, approaching things from that perspective, then that's what happens. So I think that's great.
Yeah. And there's, and I'm, and, you know, they do a really good job on those agenda reports, putting these huge packets of information together, which are all public and people can read through them. But they are on each issue, usually, you know, 60, 100, you know, like plus pages on some of these issues. And so, you know, we're going through that and trying to make decisions based on a lot of information that, you know, you know, people might not know off the top of their head, that, you know, there might be some budget implications or some implication of some other future plan that we're talking about.
Sure.
You know, that we have to have all, take all that into consideration. And so.
It's a lot.
Sometimes it's a little bit more complicated than, you know, this is good. I want it. But you, you know, sometimes it's like, yes, but if we do this and we can't do this, we can't do this, like this, you know? So we have to be able to prioritize a little bit and like take all that. There's a lot of information that goes into those things.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. I don't envy your decisions that you have to make. And so thank you for doing it. Cause council members are not well compensated. It's, it's basically a volunteer role with a stipend essentially. And so it's, it's a big job. So thank you for doing that and serving our community in that way.
I'm happy to. Absolutely.
Okay. Um, is there anything that we didn't talk about that you want to share, um, either about your business or about being on the council or anything about the city?
Well, I mean, I think that the communication piece I think is a big one. You know, I think that, you know, as someone who does marketing for a living, I think it's really important that the city does a good job of communicating. And from what I've heard, that was something they struggled with in the past and they've been doing a lot better job of. And so I kind of want to shout out our new, our new, uh, communicate, communications team and then what a good job they're doing and how they are trying so hard to get some information out there quickly. Um, like just recently, we had some videos go out. Every council member gets to do some videos, uh, with, uh, with our city, uh, and then they get posted on the city page and everything like that to kind of announce some new, new things that are coming out, some programs, some of that. So.
New businesses.
New businesses, all of that. And so it's really important. Like if, if you want to stay up to date on what's happening in the city, it's good, you know? Make sure you, you follow those different social media pages, sign up for newsletters you're interested in, because there's so much information. And that's again, like it's one of the hardest things to do as a city is, you know, you go through that website, you like highlight the links. You see how many like different services and stuff are all trying to be jam packed on that website. I don't envy them trying to have to figure out how to get all of that information out to people. So, you know, I think it's, it's important that we keep improving. We keep going in that direction and getting out. Cause if these services, if people don't know they exist, do they, it doesn't even matter if they do, right? If people don't know it exists, they can't utilize it. And so, you know, it's really important that we get out as much information as possible. And we figure out, you know, really impactful ways to do it. So, um, I want to give them a shout out and, you know, and, and that'll, and let them know, I'll keep working with them on it and trying to do, do the best we can to make that happen.
Fred Tracy and your team, you're killing it.
Oh yeah, they're fantastic.
Yeah. Awesome. That's great. That's great. Okay. So I end every interview with a few rapid fire questions. So I have a few for you. So the first is, uh, tell me a book you recommend, a book people should read.
So, I mean, this is what, so I had like this interesting thing back in, um, high school. I did homeschool for one year.
Okay.
And my English class, they kind of let you design your own class. And so I just picked like 10 books that I read, did reports on as my class. And so.
That's awesome.
One thing that I, I did like The Art of War, which was like a really cool book that I think a lot of people should read just because it's, it's interesting. But I think there was a lesser known, um, similar book called The Book of Five Rings.
Okay.
Which, um, so what book, what The Art of War is for like strategy, Book of Five Rings was for like tactics. And so it's more like smaller scale, like, you know, just individual stuff. It was written by, uh, um, Miyamoto Musashi, I believe. It was like a samurai and like he was undefeated samurai across the, you know?
Wow.
Super cool book though. Like, um, you know, the, the, he got into stuff that you wouldn't expect and it's, you know, thousands of years old or I don't know.
Wow.
Super old book, but, um, that was one of those ones where it was like super cool. But I have a bunch of other ones too, of course, but you know.
Yeah. Thank you. That's a great one. I have not read that book, so I'll add it to my list. I get all my book recommendations from my guests. So I've read quite a few and they've all been bangers frankly. So that's good.
Yeah, there's, can I do another one?
Sure. I will allow it.
Okay, cool. There was another one called, uh, Creative Following. It was written by, um, the, I think it was like the chief operations officer for Chick-fil-A.
Oh.
And so, you know, there's so many books about leadership. And so I read, this one was on, you know, being the support system to like your, your organization, rather than be, trying to be the face of it, being the best. It was creative. Yeah, you can be and stuff. So I thought, thought that was really cool, especially at a time where, you know, I was working with, you know, my business partner who was, you know, and I was trying to figure out best, the best ways I could to make the, an impact on the, on the organization. So.
That's great.
A super cool one too, that like, you know, I, I think that that's very uncommon to not read about leadership, but you know, let's one step down from that.
Yeah. I think there's, you know what? That's so important that you mention that because the, the number two person in an organization, in my opinion, is just as important, maybe more important than the person that the lead of the organization. Because the person leading an organization can't do their work without strong support and without people filling in, you know, leaders. Let's say if you need 10 skills to lead an organization, most leaders might have six of those 10. The other ones have to come from support team and they have to come in in a strong way. And so I think that's a great recommendation. Thank you for that. I'll add that one to my list too.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. What's your favorite song? What's your jam, Jeff?
My jam? Um, this might surprise people, but I'm actually a little bit of a metalhead.
Oh, that does surprise me.
Yeah. So I was like, my, my favorite bands, you know, were like the Metalikas, Iron Maiden, like all those kinds of bands growing up. So, um, you know, if I, if, if my big hype song I think was, uh, it would probably be like Four Horsemen from Metallica.
Okay.
It's like one of those things where, when you're driving, it like, you know, keeps you up.
Yeah.
And makes it probably, uh, if it's a wide open road, I wouldn't listen to it because you'll start speeding.
Okay.
Yeah.
It gets you going. Okay. I love it. That's awesome. I would, I, that you, rarely do people surprise me with their song choices, but I did not have you pegged for a metalhead. So. All right. That's cool. Okay. Tell me something that inspires you.
Um, I'd have to say my dad. Um, so growing up, he was, um, really influential on me. He, uh, like we, he was very, we were very involved in like Little League and a lot of those organizations growing up. And, um, he was a general contractor. And so, um, when our Little League, uh, so there was actually two, two experience, uh, two experiences with it. Once was, um, he helped kind of rebuild one of our churches as it was moving, um, into one of the shopping centers. So like I got to go in as a kid and knock down walls and stuff with hammers and the demo part of it, you know, before they started a, you know, I was probably six years old or something.
That's fun.
With a hammer knocking down wall.
Yeah. Six-year-old boy with a hammer.
Yeah. It was so much fun.
Go for it.
Um, and then, um, after that, it was the Rancho Buena Vista at, at the time, Rancho Buena Vista Little League fields over at, at the Optimist.
Yep.
Um, that was something, he was on the Optimist at the time, very involved in Little League and was a contractor. So it was him and Marty Miller, basically like, you know, where, where he actually worked with Marty Miller back in the day. So.
Wow.
Um, for his, 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 uh, construction company. But yeah, they helped build those, those Little League fields. He was always a coach, a manager of all the, uh, Little League teams and everything like that. So, um, this is, you know, he, he will wakes up at four, 4:00 AM, does, puts a whole day of, uh, construction and then comes home and was a coach and, you know, uh,
Yeah.
and, uh, giving back in the community and stuff like that. So that was something that I think inspired me to take public service so in like, so, um, think of it so importantly. So.
Yeah, it's great to have those amazing examples in our lives. That's fantastic. Thank you for sharing that. Um, okay. Last question. Tell me Vista business that deserves a shout out.
Okay. Um, I'm sure this one's a, like a little bit of a political one. So I gotta be careful, but no, I, I think, I want to shout out the Film Hub. You know, I think this is obviously, you know, as a marketing video production company, um, they've been in, uh, influential, I mean, almost they're, they're, this company probably wouldn't exist the way it does without, without the, the space that we're in. So, you know, we are able to utilize these podcast studios, um, all these different things. We have our office here, but then we're also able to use all these creative facilities to make all the marketing stuff that we do. So, um, you know, they're, they're a cornerstone of the community. We have so many events here, so many things that are going on that, you know, I just want to give them a shout out, I think.
Yeah. Well deserved.
Well deserved.
Cheers to the Film Hub.
Cheers to the Film Hub.
Absolutely. Here you go. There you go. Away from the mics.
I know.
Okay. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you for having me.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Super fun.
Yay. We'll have to do it again.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Hold you to that.
Okay. It might, might be a little while.
That's fair.
Got a list. Okay. Thank you to my guest, council member Jeff Fox, and thank you for listening to Velocity. If you like what you heard, please subscribe wherever you get your podcasts and tell a friend. Help us move Vista forward with velocity. The Vista Chamber of Commerce is a nonprofit organization that serves as a catalyst for business growth. Visit us online at vista chamber.org.